This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the August 2, 2023 Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order at this time. We do have all commissioners present this evening. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The virtual and public meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present tonight who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. If you'd come up to the microphone and identify yourself with your name and address for the record. Yes. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm not a resident of the township. My name is JP Mascaro III. JP Mascaro, we're one of the firms that submitted a response to your recent solicitation for the trash and recycling. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I know between now and your next meeting, you will be considering the proposals that are before you, so I wanted to just say a few things for your consideration during that period of time. As many of you know, we were the contractor in the township a long time ago. We are a locally owned and operated family business that operates here in the Lehigh Valley. We have a depot in the city of Allentown and also a large transfer and recycling facility in your neighboring township in North Whitehall. We're very strategically situated to provide a high level of service to your town. One of the things, and we did submit a submittal for your consideration, I don't know if you probably haven't had an opportunity to look at that, but I'm sure you will. Obviously, prices relating to your trash and recycling are going up. They went up over since your last solicitation. That's just a reality of everything that's going on in the world. But I would submit to you that we would certainly make ourselves available to discuss with you any of the items related to performing the contract. It wouldn't just apply to us, but any of the vendors that submitted bids as it relates to why the costs are escalating at such a rate. But we did submit to you in the packet, which you'll have an opportunity to see, I'm sure, that your increase is actually modest compared to many of the surrounding municipalities that have recently gone out to bid and awarded contracts. The trend now is to obviously lock in for as long a period of time because the costs associated with our industry are not going down. They're only going to be worse on the horizon. The Lehigh Valley represents a unique situation in that the disposal market in this market is changing drastically over the next three to five years. The biggest company in the world only submitted a three-year proposal to you because they have great uncertainty as to whether or not they'll be able to dispose of waste and recycling in this market moving forward. So I would urge you to look at the bids and look at locking in the longest rates possible to protect your residents for the long term. And also consider the ancillary costs that were submitted with the proposal. You have an aging fleet of carts in your town, which will be needing to be replaced. That's part of the solicitation. And those costs will be real costs to your residents, as well as the bulk costs that are associated with, you know, everyday living that the residents have, which are an ancillary cost in that proposal. That's really all I have to say. But again, I will make myself available or any of my staff available to go through with staff or any of the commissioners in terms of any questions that you have as you're reviewing those proposals. We thank you for the opportunity to submit a proposal and we look forward to your consideration at the future meeting. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much for your comments and for introducing yourself to our board.
Commissioner Kelly, can I ask some questions? Ms. Mascaro?
Oh, yes.
It's premature for me to ask any question other than what I'm going to ask. Do you intend to yourself, as a representative of the company, to be here the evening that we discuss the contract?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, we will be here. Thank you. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to approach the board this evening? Is there anyone online? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will move on to Agenda Item 5, which is our meeting minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 19 of 2023. They've been distributed to the board for your review. Are there any comments or questions at this time? I'll take a motion to approve.
So make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 6A, we have an ordinance amending the Southway Hall Township zoning ordinance by adding Section 350-13F zoning certificate of use and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights to enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. I'm going to turn this over to our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. To provide some background on this zoning ordinance amendment request, so basically, when staff has to issue a certificate of occupancy for, under the building code, that does not take into account any zoning-related issues. So meaning, once the township confirms compliance with the building code, we are required by state's law, state statute, to actually issue a certificate of occupancy within a prescribed time period. So if there's some outstanding zoning issues at that time, we don't have a mechanism currently to address that. So after conducting some research, staff found that other municipalities have instituted what is called a certificate of use or zoning certificate of use. So this would then certify that a project or building and structure is in compliance with municipal zoning ordinance and all other applicable ordinances. So you'd still issue the certificate of occupancy, but you would have the certificate of use as a final check and balance on obtaining or achieving compliance with the zoning ordinance. So this has been reviewed multiple times. So it's been reviewed at the level of the Board of Commissioners. The solicitor has reviewed it. The planning commissioner has reviewed it twice. And the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission has also submitted a comment letter that the draft ordinance demonstrates evolution and adaptability of government as part of the original plan. So at this point, the township staff would recommend that you move forward with all requirements under the municipality's planning code to adopt the ordinance, including advertisement of a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. And it looks like the date that's been suggested to advertise would be regarding a September 6 hearing for possible adoption.
Yes.
Is that correct? Very good. Thank you. I'll open up to the board if there's any questions or comments on said ordinance.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I agree with this. It gives the township a little more leverage for compliance, and I support it. We've talked about it quite a few times, as our manager said. And I'm ready to go forward.
I agree. Any other comments? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I have a motion to approve said ordinance.
Make the motion. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom and staff. Moving on to Ordinance 6B, we have 457B Ordinance Amendment Motion requesting permission for pension solicitor Eckert Siemens to prepare ordinance amendment as well as plan document. And I'll ask Tom Petrucci to present as well.
Thank you. So earlier this year, the Southway Hall Township Police Department Union inquired whether it would be possible to allow for alternative investment plan managers for the township's 457B deferred compensation plan. Currently, the township allows employees to select either Nationwide or Valick as the improved investment managers for the plan. Just so everyone is aware, the 457B deferred compensation plan is a voluntary plan offered by the township in which plan participants may make contributions that are not matched by the township in any way. The plan allows for pre-tax deductions of any amount contributed into the plan, and this is consistent with IRS regulations. Basically, upon review of the existing 457B ordinance, the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Master Prototype Deferred Compensation Program and its corresponding investment options were referenced directly in the ordinance. The ordinance is no longer consistent with the current plan documents and use in the investment managers that are utilized. It's important to note that the ordinance was adopted in February of 1993, and it's never been updated. So it stands to reason. That's why it's not consistent. So basically, I am seeking authorization to engage the pension attorney, which is Eckert Siemens, also our labor attorney, for the purpose of assisting the township with the preparation of a new plan ordinance and a plan document that is consistent with both township practices and relevant IRS regulations. So the projected outcomes are as follows. A 457B plan document specific to Southway Hall Township and not provided by an investment manager, a document that allows for additional investment managers to be approved as determined to be appropriate, a revised ordinance that accurately reflects current township practices, a plan document that provides clear and concise guidance to both the plan administrator, which is the township manager, and plan participants, both former and current, as what is permitted in terms of plan administrative actions, including but not limited to plan withdrawals, plan emergency withdrawals, contribution limits, loans as applicable, and in accordance with all relevant IRS regulations. And then finally, a 457 Plan B document that provides clear regulations on requirements for investment managers, including custody of records, fiduciary area authority, and fees. With that being said, $75,000 was appropriated to general fund line item, object code 40953, for Labor Legal Councils, part of the approved 2023 budget. To date, just over $11,000 in costs have been incurred, thereby giving us just over $63,000 available in that line item. So this project is estimated to cost $4,000. So with that, I'd seek a motion to authorize the township manager to work with the labor attorney to produce a vision to Chapter 5814 and a 457B plan document that is specific to Southway Hall Township and consistent with IRS requirements.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. I'll open up to the board for any comments or questions on this agenda item. Any from the public? Do I hear a motion to authorize the township manager to work with pension solicitor Eckert Siemens to prepare ordinance amendment as well as the plan document?
Make a motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Not on this subject, but I just want to make a comment that the pension committee did meet on July 26th from the township. Herbender, township manager, Commissioners Osborne, and myself were there, and our...
Actuary and investment manager.
We did meet in the room.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. Moving on to Agenda Item 7A, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement pursuant to 53 PACSA Section 2307 intergovernmental cooperation by and between Southway Hall Township and the County of Lehigh, and further authorizing the execution and delivery of said document by the township manager. And Tom, if you would present.
Yes, thank you. So in November 6, 2013, Southway Hall Township and Lehigh County entered into a 10-year tower license agreement that provided for the mutual use of properties owned by the township, which is Huckleberry Reservoir and Lehigh County Cedar Brook Senior Care and Rehabilitation, to store radio equipment in each of these properties. So the agreement is mutually beneficial and reciprocating, and the past agreement was enclosed for reference. The agreement provides for each entity to have space at their respective properties for access to and storage of telecommunications equipment. Both township and county officials have reviewed the inventory list and determined it to be acceptable. With this expiring on November 6 of 2013, we felt it was appropriate to execute a new tower license agreement along with the corresponding resolution, which is a requirement of Chapter 23 of Title 53 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes related to intergovernmental cooperation. So the agreement has been reviewed by the county solicitor's office, by the township solicitor, and the emergency management coordinator, as well as Public Works and Administration. So we feel it's ready to be adopted at this point. So once we adopt it, then the county will also have to adopt a similar resolution, meeting the Intergovernmental Collaboration Act, Cooperation Act, and then we will have another 10 years in which we are sharing with, at no cost to either entity.
Very good. That was going to be my question. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board questions or comments on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution, which authorizes the township manager to execute and deliver the tower usage license agreement? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7B, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain subdivision and land development ordinance review and approval requirements for a plan entitled Proposed ATM Kiosk, Tillman Square Shopping Center. And I'll ask Tom to present.
Thank you. So upon review of the outstanding engineering comments that were provided by the township engineer, township staff is respectfully requesting to table this matter until the applicant can address those comments to the satisfactory of the township engineer as well as the Community Development Department.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this? I'll need a motion to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7C, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain subdivision and land development ordinance review and approval requirements for a plan entitled Broadway Sidewalk Grading Plan for Tillman Square Shopping Center. Tom, if you'd present.
Yes, very similar. Upon review of the comments that were issued by the township engineer, we are requesting to table this request for a land development waiver until such time that the applicant can address the comments to the satisfaction of the township engineer and the township Community Development Department.
Very good, Tom. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Just one comment. Commissioner Kelly, thank you. Tony, I wanted to thank you for your diligence in reviewing these and your recommendations.
Thank you. No problem.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to table this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, motions. 8A, I have a motion to proceed with capital improvements, roof replacements on three of the water stations. And then over to our Director of Operations, Herbender.
Yes, Public Works Utility is respectfully requesting approval to move forward with replacing three roofs on the water, three different water stations. The three roofs that will be replaced are Spring House Water Station, Whitehall and Huckleberry Water Station, and Shaysville Water Station. The cost of this project for just the materials is $4,500, and Public Works will install the new roofs along with tear off the old ones. This project was not in the budget for 2023, but due to the savings from Public Works doing all the framework at the Whitehall and Huckleberry Station, we had a savings of $20,000 there. So we, action requested is Public Works is respectfully requesting a motion to approve the purchase of the roof materials. Water facilities capital was budgeted for $35,000, I'm sorry, in 2023. After the new doors at Whitehall and Huckleberry Station and Cedar Brook Water Station, that cost was $14,120. There's a balance left of $20,880 in that account.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. Always nice to hear that we have had savings on a project. So thank you to Public Works for diligent work. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this motion?
Just to comment again, I have the Public Works. Continue to do that. Thanks. I said all.
No problem. I definitely will. We are very fortunate. We have very talented guys in the Public Works downstairs.
Is no board comment? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to grant permission for the purchase of roof materials for replacement of the roofs of three water stations?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Correspondence and Information. I'll turn to the township manager to review our meeting dates and current vacancies.
Thank you. The upcoming meeting dates are as follows. Monday, August 7, 7:00 p.m., Public Safety Commission. Tuesday, August 8, 6:00 p.m., Pendot will be providing a public plans display for the Route 309 Betterment Project located in South Whitehall and North Whitehall Townships. Thursday, August 10, 10:00 a.m., Civil Service Commission. Tuesday, August 15, 6:00 p.m. is the Southway Hall Township Landscapes Plan Meeting Number Two, and agricultural resources will be discussed. Wednesday, August 16, is 7:00 p.m., then the next Board of Commissioners meeting. All details are posted on the township website.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Direction Discussion Items. 10A, Possible Scheduling of a BOC Special Meeting for Purposes of Discussing and Consideration of Approval for the Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection Disposal and Recycling Services Contract for Southway Hall Township. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. On July 26, at 10:00 a.m., the township opened the bids for the next residential municipal solid waste and recycling services contract, which would run from either January 1, '24 through '26, December 31, '26, or December 31, '28, if the five-year option is selected by the township. Three bids were received from three different firms, including JP Mascaro Waste Management and Whitetail Disposal. Per the specifications, the township attends that the contract shall be awarded within 45 days following the date the proposals are publicly opened and read. Staff is respectfully requesting to schedule a special meeting in which this would be the only agenda item to give the board and any interested parties or residents ample time to discuss this matter. We would request the special meeting, which is a public meeting, as that term is defined in the Sunshine Law, which is a public meeting where you're not conducting, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting. So it's no different than the meeting tonight, just for anyone, for everyone's information, that's just simply a special meeting that you scheduled outside of your regular meeting schedule. It must be advertised as well. So we would recommend Monday, August 21, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. as the first choice for scheduling that special meeting. Would respectfully request a motion to confirm that.
Excellent. Very good, Tom. Thank you. So has the board had an opportunity to review these dates, and would you be in agreement to schedule a special meeting on the 21st of August, which is a Monday at 6:00 p.m. for this purpose? Yes.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions overall on the topic? Are there any from the public?
I do have one comment. Can we just make sure that each of the three companies that submitted a bid are notified of the meeting? I know Mr. Mascaro said one of his representatives would attend.
Yeah.
We want to give that opportunity to all three.
Yes, we have an obligation to do that, and we are going to make sure it's well advertised on the front page of the website as well.
That's excellent. Very good, so that we can get as many residents aware of this if they're interested in hearing about this. Yes.
Tom, are you going to notify the commissioners, give us the packages, packets in advance of that meeting?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
You'll have everything you'll need in advance of the meeting.
Excellent. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to proceed with the scheduling of a Board of Commissioners special meeting for purposes of discussing and consideration of approval of the Residential Municipal Solid Waste Collection Disposal and Recycling Services Contract for Southway Hall Township to be scheduled on August 21 at 6:00 p.m. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 10B, America 250 PA Legacy Project. Tom, are you presenting on this one?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250 PA was established by the legislature and governor in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States, Pennsylvania's integral role in that event, and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. At this time, the Committee for America 250 PA is seeking legacy projects that would be funded as part of this overall project. And they are looking specifically for projects that use history to encourage and inspire future leaders, celebrate the contributions of Pennsylvanians to the Commonwealth's history as well as the nation's history, and those that leave a lasting impact on the next generation. So proposals located in Lehigh County are being accepted for consideration of funding by way of this program until August 22. The criteria for inclusion is flexible, with all the below items generally eligible for inclusion into the program, including agriculture, arts and culture, commerce and workforce, diversity, education, innovation, environment, government, health and wellness, history and preservation, legacy, nature, military, veterans, and women, and technology and tourism. And very generally, projects should have a nexus between the 250th anniversary of the United States and the above criteria. Funding levels range from Level 1, which is up to 250,000, all the way up to Level 4, which is 2.5 million and above. So with the recent completion of the comprehensive plan, the township is in the process of commencing numerous planning implementation projects focusing around zoning regulations, active transportation, historic resources, utility and infrastructure planning, pedestrian safety, and landscape open space preservation. There's are projects that have already gone an extensive planning process. Almost all are either in progress or funded by way of separate grant programs. So you have the Jordan Creek Greenway, Covered Bridge Park, Vistus Park, among others as examples. One program that has undergone a preliminary planning process but has not moved forward to any stage of post-implementation is the Kohler Ridge Park Master Plan. So the township has a concept master plan, but there's no final engineered or architectural design drawings. So I did provide information regarding Kohler Ridge as included as part of the board's packets, but generally, it's envisioned as a passive park that utilizes three parcels totaling 25.7 acres of property that was acquired by the township, and it would provide an accessible setting that allows residents and visitors to engage with nature. So after careful vetting and consideration of a multitude of project concepts, township staff opines that the Kohler Ridge Park Project may fit under the umbrella of the America 50 PA Program, specifically under the criteria of environment, government, legacy, and nature. So the latest cost estimates for the Kohler Ridge Park, again, on a conceptual basis, totaled for 10 phases was $3,543,828.22, not including alternate roofs options for a proposed eco-bomb. So township staff wouldn't recommend the inclusion of the alternate roof option due to the associated increased maintenance costs. So recognizing that many of the options delineated in each of the phases of the master plan may not make it into a final build-out version of the facility, the Board of Commissioners, if you were to be inclined to seek funding through the America 250 PA Program for this project, the recommendation would be to submit a preliminary scoping application for the consideration of the America 250 PA Committee, using the overall budget figure, but to make sure, to articulate the fact the project's subject to change once it goes into the final, or next phase of final engineering and design. We would have to take into account in any design or final configuration build-out of the park, you'd have to, you know, identify comments of adjoining residence, township staff, and additional review comments from the governing body. So the overall cost of the project might have to be subject to change in the future. cost of the project might, might have to be subject to change in the future. One, one thing that staff discussed was basically weaving in local historical elements into the aesthetic design language of this park, including signage to provide that direct nexus to the goals of the America 250 PA Program. So I know we had discussed, like even somebody had said, you know, calling it Heritage Park, or Cultural, Cultural Park, or, or, you know, some other, to, 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 you know, really confirm that, that connection. So, you know, we also felt that with the park providing a view of the Jordan Valley, opportunities exist to tell the local historical story of this area through use of, of this is the signage and design cues that could be incorporated into the park design. One thing I wanted to bring the attention of the board was that there were additional maintenance and personnel costs associated with this plan. ETM Associates LLC had attempted to identify all associated operation and maintenance costs that would be added as a result of the full build-out of all phases of this park. It included considerations for groundskeeping, horticultural, natural resource management, and specialized services. So the estimate prepared at that time plusulated that the park completed to all phases would add about 93,300 in additional maintenance costs and 773 maintenance hours per year related to the park, including personnel time and supplies. Upon review, Public Works is estimating that it would require hiring two additional full-time employees, at least one laborer and one operator. So one laborer right now is, is about $93,000 per year, including all benefits, and one operator is approximately $104,000 per year, including benefits. So in conclusion, if the board's inclined to seek funding through this program, the recommendation is to submit a preliminary scoping application for the consideration of the America 250 PA Committee, using the overall budget figure. In that way, you know, you would be able to ascertain if, if the committee's even inclined to move this project forward to any next stage of, of the program. We, we opine that the committee's going to have a voluminous amount of application submissions to the program, and it's ultimately up to them whether, whether this project is, is determined to be a worthy project, worthy of, of funding. So basically, it's up to the board at this point, whether, whether you would like to see that as an option or not.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate the very comprehensive presentation, and certainly the inclusion of the full project, including maintenance and personnel, which, based on my calculation, we're looking at potentially $300,000 a year added if we were to build this out.
Fully build out. Yeah, you'd, you would have two employees, but, you know, the 93,000, that's a conservative figure. So, yeah, I would say somewhere between 200,000 to 300,000. Yeah.
That's very good information for us to have whenever we consider any project moving forward. So I thank you and staff for providing that to us. I would be in favor personally of pursuing this. I like the idea of potentially calling it Heritage Park. We've talked very often, this board has publicly, about memorializing the history of our township, and a lot here that we would love to preserve and present to future generations. And I just had one question. I know the plan, as it was presented through the prior board, included a lot of play and more played concepts, and I know a lot of feedback from the community was they were more interested in a more passive park. Would we have the option, if we were granted this grant money to, when we applied for it, to submit for a passive park, more along the lines of a Trexler Park or nature preserve? So it would be more of a natural?
Yes, because I, I think the overall concept of the plan was more geared towards that type of park.
Okay.
And I, so it would be very consistent with the master plan to, to, to make sure, to align it more with the passive activities.
Very good. That was certainly a concern when I read this, but thank you very much for the presentation. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Well, I like the whole idea, Tom. I think you did a great job. I would have to assume, which I shouldn't assume anything, is we can only submit one?
Ah, you, I don't know that that's correct. I mean, I think you could probably submit more. We simply couldn't come up with any other ideas.
Okay, all right.
Because we, a lot of the projects we have ongoing are already funded by grants, and we're trying to close those out as we move along. So we've not taken on any new projects. As we go through that process, for example, like Vista's Park and Covered Bridge, Phase C. So, you know, basically, to answer your question, you certainly could submit more. We've vetted a few different ideas and landed upon this one as the only viable option. If anyone has other ideas, we'd be certainly willing to hear and discuss it.
Well, this ticks off a lot of your boxes, I think, which is what you said.
Correct.
Which I like about that. So that's one thing it does do from the, from the America 250 PA funding.
Yes.
I just have a couple of other questions along those lines. It also makes sense to apply for this, given how far along we are with the Coleridge Park Master Plan. There would be other potential projects down the road that would meet this criteria, but they're not far along enough yet where we'd actually have a specific plan, say agricultural preservation or specific historic preservation. We're not far enough along there to submit a more thorough application, correct?
Correct.
So overall, I'll concur with what Dave and Diane said. I know this is in the memo. I just want to confirm it verbally. The preliminary scoping application is just to, for us to submit to the committee to see if we're even eligible. We're not locking ourselves into spending a certain amount of money on the project. We're not locking ourselves into a certain plan, which, which would include those associated maintenance fees. This is just preliminary. We are not bound to spend any money based on this application. If we were to be approved or moved along in the process, correct?
Correct. There, there's absolutely no binding language contractually in the, in the application. I preliminarily clicked on going through the process. It's literally, they're asking for like 500 words. They want to see the budget. They're not, there's nothing in there that says, if you submit this, you must do it. To me, it's more of a, just an initial vetting process, because they, as the committee, are going to probably be receiving so many applications, they need, they need a mechanism by which to filter them through.
Here's my question, one more question. I know the amount here was roughly 3.5 million, which would put us in the Level 4.
Yes.
Is there a possibility that they come back to us and say, well, it won't meet the requirement for that level, but you might be eligible if you revise the plan for Level 2 or Level 3? We're not putting ourselves at risk of, of potentially receiving no money by submitting a, a plan that's in Level 4.
They ultimately could make that call, that, that the project is not, is not even worthy, you know, to be honest, right? As with any type of application for a grant. So to answer your question, they, they could say they would not want to fund any portion of this project. It is also customary where agencies might say, yes, we'll do it at a lower amount, or please adjust it. These are all things that are, that are on the table.
Thank you.
And which point, I want to be very clear, that if they come back with a lower amount, we, as township staff, would have to come back to you for approval, because you'd be looking at some type of matching fund then. We're, we're simply submitting this at that, at this point to see if there's any interest. And I can clarify that in, in, in the application as well.
Just because, you know, a three and a half million dollar price tag, and even more so that the maintenance costs, which I don't believe we've ever seen for this project before, under previous boards and previous plans, it's just, it's a big number.
It absolutely is.
And that would not be covered by grant money? That would be?
That would never be covered by grant money.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, I do have a, a comment. Thank you. I do remember attending the meetings about Coleridge when they were virtual, and I remember the survey that came out. The, the plans were actually a lot more sophisticated than I remember what residents were, were saying that they wanted, especially after speaking with the residents that lived on, on Brickyard. It seemed like people generally wanted a passive park. So thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Kelly. I also wanted to ask if those homes, I, I know there is a damaged home, but there is also a white home. Now that we're into historical, and we're talking more about historical and preservation, is there any way that home or any part of it could be saved and repurposed? Is, are both in such disrepair, or?
I will say they're in pretty, pretty bad shape.
Pretty rough, both of them. Okay.
Yeah, without getting into the specifics of it. But I guess everything is salvageable to some extent.
Yeah, or even a marker, because, you know, having those
Yeah.
older homes, it's just interesting, the architecture, how they're built, and it just would have been nice to hear that there's something there that could be salvaged somehow.
I mean, I'm sure there's elements of it, but we can look at that further.
Okay. All righty. And that was, that was basically it. So thank you.
Can just add a comment. I think one of the other things we ought to try to do is make sure, keep our legislators informed as to what we're doing on this, and certainly ask for their support, you know, Senator Coleman and Schlossberg and, you know, everybody who's involved in South Whitehall Township.
Absolutely.
So that we get their support behind us. So, yeah.
I had one question. Under military veterans and women, I know we've discussed at different meetings about having hometown hero designations on our tree poles. Is that something we could quickly put together? It would be a, a small project, but if we could get grant funding for it?
We, that was one of the ideas that we had kicked around, but we didn't feel it was far enough along to warrant, because we don't know exactly locations. We haven't vetted that through a public process, so we really don't know. We have ideas of where it would be appropriate, but, you know, we really want to get them through the public processes, which is why we're undergoing all these implementation plans to get to that point. So the next time another grant opportunity comes around, we have those projects ready to go. So we have a list of projects ready, or may not be to this level, but at least they're scoped out a little bit better.
That makes sense, Dave. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, especially factoring in, you know, you, you're going to be potentially using right-of-way and, and, you know, locating and citing, citing the, the hometown heroes' flags and signage on people's property or right across from their property.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Any other board comment on this agenda item? Any public comment? Yes. Come to the microphone. Please turn it on and give us your name and address, please.
Chris Peichel. The other, listening to your talk, and I probably know what your answer's going to be, but since it's 250 in the history of South Whitehall, there are projects that you can start. So we have all the historic homes along the Greenway we talked about, the Troxel Home, the Lawrence Goose Home, et cetera, Jordan Lutheran Church, that may be eligible for the, the year 250 anniversary, because it's the history of not only South Whitehall, but the county as well. Those homes along there date back to the 1800s. The other thing is, right down the railroad tracks from your park here, is the camp where they trained for World War I, when they came from Camp Crane for the ambulance drivers. You could still see the trenches in the ground, but Mother Nature's starting to reclaim it, shall we say. It, to lose that history would, would be sad, but at some point, we have to start to, who owns the land? How can we, can we obtain the land? Can we get, because there is history in the Lake County Historical Society and the fairgrounds that talks about their campsite out in South Whitehall. So they would march out from Camp Crane, which is the fairgrounds. They would spend their time there. The apartments at the, at the railroad crossing was the Goose Station Hotel. They had, they weren't allowed to serve booze because the troops were right there, but that's a whole nother story. But there's other things like, that you may not be along the way to do something, but somewhere the planning has to start, or funding for the planning to try to save these things, like you said about those two homes, before it goes away.
So we, we kind of alluded to some of the comments that we had, and we're throwing ideas out there. And the homes that Mr. Peichel has brought up was definitely one of the ideas that was thrown out there. If we could leverage this grant to help preserve and, but it, we determined that it's just not far enough along, unfortunately, and hoping through the historic resources part of the landscapes plan, we have a strategy identified so that when we move forward or have another opportunity, we can move forward and preserve it. Because Mr. Peichel's right, the story there is incredible, and it ties to the 250th. So there's a great opportunity there, and it, it's unfortunate that it's not quite to the point where we can act on anything, partly because of property ownership and where that is. So we're really hoping that the landscapes plan helps direct a lot of that historic preservation, and, you know, where and how is really the, the big question. And Mr. Peichel, I hope that you're available the third Tuesday of, is it the third Tuesday? Fourth Tuesday of August for the Historic Resources Meeting of the Landscapes Plan, six to eight here in the Township Building.
I just had a question. I know that we're not in a position to work on that particular destination, but could we incorporate into this plan signage that discusses that very location and the significance of it, like with a storyboard that might face that direction?
Absolutely. And if one of the ideas, like, we've done a lot of brainstorming on this, and, you know, if the canopy walk and the platform, the viewing platform has the view of that part of the Jordan Valley, putting up a message board or a sign board that talks about, you know, like the panoramic and says, here's where this house is, and explains some of that history, is a great opportunity to tie that heritage with signage into this park, and particularly if we have that view. There's a lot of opportunity there. And I, I think some of that will be working into the text description of the application, so that we can kind of highlight more of that tie-in to the 250th.
That's clear and evident to me. You've done a lot of behind-the-scenes brainstorming over this. Thank you for all of your work and for bringing this to the board for consideration. Ask one more time. Does any board comments? Any other public comment? At this time, do I have a motion to allow for the submission of a preliminary scoping application to the America 250 PA Committee in the amount of $3,543,287.22 for consideration of funding for the Coleridge Park Project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you again to all the support staff. Moving on to Agenda Item 10C, August 8th, 2023, Route 309 Betterment Project Meeting General Information. Tommy presenting this one?
Sure. Basically, on August 8th, so PENDOT has identified the need to ensure that for the 309 project, for the Betterment Project, that they are providing a forum for impacted residents and residents overall to, to view the plans and submit comments. So the township has agreed to allow the, the public plans to be displayed here Tuesday, August 8th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Actually, also on the township website, there is a link to all of the relevant information for the plans and the overall background information for the project. So, you know, I would encourage anyone that may have already received letters or is, is going to be impacted in some way by the project to, to attend the meeting here at the township.
Thank you, Tom. So that was my question. Have residents or businesses in this affected area been notified by PENDOT already?
They have. They have.
The township doesn't have any need to then further notify specifically?
Not my, not, not my opinion, no.
Excellent. Very good. Open it up to the board for any comments or questions. Commissioner Hodges?
I have a quick question. I'm not sure if staff would know the answer to this, but I'm just curious as to how the area was designated and decided upon. I guess it's from Walbert to Shankwiler Road.
So it, it was part of the Transportation Improvement Plan. I believe I believe it was on the Long Range Transportation Plan, so it's been going through the process through the MPO, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. So it's been going through PENDOT and the Lehigh Valley Transportation Studies Process. And it was identified a long time ago for that section. Believe me, I've made them aware that they missed a section of roadway on 309 at the Ridgeview intersection. So I've been hammering that home every chance I get because the Tillman Street project falls short of that, and then this one starts just past it.
Right, you read my mind.
Yeah, so it, they're probably tired of hearing me say that, but I never stop.
But thank you for bringing it up.
Yes.
More than once, because that's really that intersection too. And actually, I was kind of disappointed when I saw that it started at Walbert and did not include Ridgeview, because that's, we need help there.
Yeah, and I think, you know, having the dialogue and having the two projects, you know, stop just short, we're going to have the, something's going to have to happen, and it may, we may be able to bump it up for funding as really just an intersection improvement as opposed to doing a whole corridor, which honestly is what is probably needed there, is to look at the intersection and the functionality of that intersection.
Excuse me, Commissioner Kelly. The, recently, the new Transportation Impact Plan came out, and for the first time, I think, the Ridgeview intersection was identified as a extreme, it's a long-term plan, so I mean, it's nothing, but they have it identified as a intersection to be studied. So that means that they don't know what's going to happen, but it at least finally made it to the back end. It's great news. It's obviously, we all hope it gets pushed faster, but it's at least made it to the book.
It's on the map, yeah.
That's excellent news. Thank you for that update, Tom. Are there any other board comments or questions? Any public comment? Oh, Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did want to add, so the link that's on the website takes you to a PENDOT, the project page. There's a public comment form on that page, so if you do want to submit comments, you can't make the meeting, and you want to submit a formal comment, there's a comment form on that PENDOT page.
Excellent. Is it possible to indicate that on our website more specifically so that someone not able to attend the public meeting would realize they have the ability?
I can check how the link is in there. I might be able to put a link directly to the public comment form. I will look into that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Moving online, okay. Moving on to 11.
Actually, Commissioner Kelly, before we move on from direction discussion, just two items I wanted to bring up. First, thank you to everyone involved with the National Light Out program last night, our police department, all four fire departments that serve our township, Green Waltz, Woodlawn, Sotroni and Tri-Clover were there, Sotroni ambulance, emergency management. It was really a great night, engaged with the community, so I'd just like to thank all the individuals involved, Chief Dornay, Sergeant Groger, everyone involved in the planning of that event. I think it was extremely successful, and I think will help to foster more positive relationships between all of our emergency services and the community. So I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone involved with that. And the second item, I believe if I'm correct, tomorrow, it will be one year since the board, I was not a member of the board at the time, named Tom Petrucci as our Township Manager. And I just want to say, only having been a commissioner for about eight months now, I want to thank you, Tom, for your leadership, your professionalism. South Whitehall for many years had a lot of significant challenges, but I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and the team that you have assembled. And I think we can say that you've built one of the best municipal management teams, certainly in the Lehigh Valley, so look forward to many more years of your service to our township.
Thank you, Jacob. Very, very strong words, and I appreciate, and I know coming from you, you know, that you wouldn't say unless you really meant it, so thank you.
I agree totally with what Commissioner Roth said. I'm very thankful for you, Tom, and for your leadership and for all of our staff.
I'll say something nice, too. I don't think, maybe not at present, but short-term and down the road, this township will realize the impact you have for this township. It may not be today, although we see it up here, and the residents who come to our meetings see it, but I can tell you, down the road, the residents of this township will definitely realize the impact you made for this, and it's very well appreciated, and it'll be long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, thank you for all of the hard-working staff, the management team, you know, the manager's role is only to provide leadership and direction, and, you know, we all work well together, and I think we continue to work even better together over time, and I'm glad you're seeing the results of that. So it means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, we have no old business. Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to address the board with any non-agenda item? None? Okay. Agenda Item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.